Good evening and welcome to the Town of Fort Mill Council's regular meeting, February the 8th, 2021. Thank you all for joining us. I hope that you're having had a good Super Bowl weekend and welcome you to our meeting. With that, we will do a pledge of allegiance and then Ronnie, would you like to do our prayer for this evening? He can't hear me, so it might be me.
Yeah, I think it's fine, but everybody say everybody microphone on that way.
Okay, I'll do it. That'll be fine. If we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us with each other and the work that we do collectively to help our town and our community in its best endeavors. Thank you for the efforts of my fellow council members and our staff as we all attempt to do the best that we can. Please bless us all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, council members, I see Lisa, I see Ronnie, Jamie, Larry, and I heard Chris Moody. I see that you're there. Trudy, are you with us?
I saw her join earlier.
I see her initials, but I don't see her picture or her microphone turned on, so we'll move forward. Okay, council members, you've been given the minutes for the January 25th, 21 Town Council meetings. Are there any changes, deletions, hi Trudy, or additions to be made? Hearing none. I hate to do it, but we'll go Larry, how do you, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, I got Jamie with a motion and who was doing the second?
I'll do it second.
Okay, thank you, Chris Moody. We have a motion to accept and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, that's a unanimous vote for publishing the minutes of our Town Council meeting. Public comment pursuant to Section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give comments. Davy, you are at our council chambers. Do we have anyone present that would like to make a public comment? Davy?
Sorry, Mayor.
Do we have anyone that would like to make a public comment?
We do not have anyone in present to make a public comment. We do have one name. But after a brief conversation with them prior to the meeting, they declined to speak and plan to come back at a future meeting to share.
That's fine. We will welcome them when they come before council. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we'll move on to presentations. There are no presentations at this evening's meeting and there are no old business items. So we'll begin then with new business items. Our first new business item is first reading and public hearing and ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 716000028, containing approximately 1.66 plus or minus acres located off Vista Road. This is in Ward 2 and Mr. Helms' Ward. Penelope is our subject matter expert and we will open the public hearing now. Davy, do we have anyone present that wanted to provide comment to the public hearing?
No ma'am, no one signed up.
Okay, do we have anyone online that is attempting to make a comment for the public hearing of new business item number one? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed on new business item number one. Do I have a motion on this particular item?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shirey. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Penelope, what would you like to share with us?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is an annexation, basically 1.66 acres to adjoin it with the already approved Pleasant Vista MXU development. Mr. Cooper Willis is online. He's here to answer any questions if anyone has for him. At the planning commission, they recommended approval of this annexation for it to have the MXU zoning district.
Welcome, Mr. Cooper. Thank you for joining us. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the first reading of this proposal?
Mayor, it might be a good idea to refresh all of us. I'm believing that this is where the hospital training facility was gonna be.
Yes, I think it is as well. Penelope and Cooper, if you want to join in. This is a proposal for a rehabilitation hospital that would be located off of Vista and Pleasant, a nice commercial addition to our community and something that I'm sure we will all use at some point. Anything change other than this additional 1.66 acres to add to the project?
No ma'am. And so basically, you know, as a mixed use development, you have the commercial and you have the rehab center and also already approved like townhomes. So this small piece is a triangular piece that complements it to be added to Mr. Willis' MXU to just square off the property. It's also, I believe, there's a power line. So it's just really to clean up the acreage and to include it in the MXU.
Anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you to all the council for your time tonight. I would just add, we're, I'm just adding this, we're not changing any of the approved density. So this will actually decrease, albeit slightly, the density that's already approved. So as Penelope mentioned, it's really just squaring this off and it'll provide flexibility on whatever the final layout is for this property. So again, we're just adding it, but not adding any density or have any ask for any additional development due to this being added.
All right, council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Cooper or for Penelope?
Uh, Ronnie, the whole question I had earlier was about the mobile home that was listed on the property.
If you could, you're the best I could understand is Ronnie's asking about an existing mobile home on the property.
Yeah, hey Ronnie, how are you doing? It, um, there's a mobile home on there now. It's rented and I own it, but it'll, it'll stay there until that property gets developed and then the mobile home will be removed.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Cooper or for Penelope? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve new business item number one and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those say? I don't hear any nays. All right, we will now move to new business item number two, first reading and public hearing. It is my understanding and Davy, correct me if I'm wrong, or Penelope, but on this, we are simply doing the public hearing and there will be a delay on the actual first reading. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're doing a public reading on new business item number two, which is an ordinance annexing a portion of York County Tax Map Number 709000057 and containing approximately .70 plus or minus acres. This also is in Ward number three, which is Mr. Huntley and Penelope is our subject matter expert. Do I have a motion? No, we're opening a public hearing. Excuse me. Do we have anyone, Davy, that would like to speak about this particular item?
No, Mayor, no one signed up for that.
All right, do we have anyone online that would like to speak to this project? All right, hearing none. The public hearing for this item is closed and hopefully we'll do the first reading at our next meeting. New business item number three is also a public hearing and first reading. Public hearing is on an ordinance amending the mixed use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant Vista MXU project consisting of parcels currently or formerly known as York County Tax Map Numbers. Oh my gosh, let me see if I can lump any of them together. 0200901, 027, 028, 031, not 031, but 31, 032, 033, 034, 35, 36, then 0200901, 078, 079, and 028. That's ridiculous. Such parcels containing approximately 158.62, that's 158.62 plus or minus acres located at the intersection of Pleasant Road and Vista Road. This is in Ward 2. It's Mr. Helms' Ward and Penelope is our subject matter expert. We will open the public hearing now. Davy, do we have anyone?
No, Mayor, no one signed up.
Is there anyone online? Hearing none, we're gonna close the public meeting. Do I have a motion on new business item number three?
Make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Larry. Penelope, talk to us.
Yes, Mayor, and I do apologize. There was a missing zero under my staff report for 31. So, and I do thank you for repeating all those parcel numbers. I know that is a bear, but you did so well, so thank you. This amendment, basically from Cooper Willis, you know, since we annexed the 1.66 into the town for the first reading, this is basically amending the development conditions and concept plan to include the 1.66 acres. It is also adding, staff had requested, since Cooper was amending the 1.66, we wanted to have a list of all the permissible commercial uses. So he has added that into the development conditions. The planning commission reviewed it, made some changes and they made approval with all, you know, with amending the 1.66 and the list of the commercial uses.
Okay. Council members, do you have questions in regards to new business item number three? Penelope, are these just standard business uses just for those that may be watching?
Yes, they are. And we basically use the examples of other MXUs that actually have the listed commercial, commercial permissible uses.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
This is Barry, how are you?
Hey Barry.
I just wanted to clarify, as you were going through all those numbers, there, the last number, which is a county tax map number 716-0000-028, you just kind of lumped that 28 into the rest of them?
Yes.
And I just want to make, make sure that we're clear that that's a separate parcel and it's not, it's not 020, 09, 01, 28.
Thank you. As Barry has pointed out, I did indeed do that. This is like reading off something of a tax roll instead. It's 716000028. Thank you, Barry. And that is in addition to the others that began with 020. These numbers are printed on the published format that we provide for our agenda and if there's any question, please call us and we will straighten it out. All right, council members, do you have any questions? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve and we have a second for new business item number three. If you vote, please say yea if you're voting for this motion as it stands on the table. Yea?
Aye.
Yea, thank you. Salers and my other language mixed up. If you're voting against this particular motion, please say nay. You're no nays. All right, thank you for the vote on this business item number three. We will now move to new business item number four. Consideration of a resolution to adopt the Town of Fort Mill 2021 COVID-19 sick leave plan, temporary policy, Davy Broom. I need a motion on this particular item.
I make a motion to accept number four.
I hear a motion from Jamie and Trudy. Are you seconding?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Davy?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe everyone received the information in their, in their packets, but I'll go through this fairly quickly. The Family, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, otherwise known as FF-CRA, that was enacted by the federal government on April 1st of 2020, was not extended and it actually expired December 31st of 2020. That was an act, a federal act that allowed or required a company provide 80 hours of time, additional time for COVID-related or specific COVID-related incidents. The, this temporary policy that we're asking for extends a sick leave for the COVID-19 to our employees who have not used all or part of the FF-CRA in the past. This will be extended through March 31st of 2021. That's first quarter of 2021. We have checked with other municipalities in the area and around the state and found kind of a mixed bag. Some, many are extending these to their employees, but not everyone is. The objective of this is, again, we want to, as a town, follow U.S. guidelines for the health and safety of employees by separating COVID-affected staff through quarantine periods. Staff currently utilizes accrued sick leave and vacation leave for, for these quarantine periods due to COVID-19. This temporary policy reimburses up to 80 hours of sick or personal leave to anyone that tests positive for COVID. Again, the temporary policy extends through March 31st of 2021. I just wanted to state that, you know, the majority of our staff does not have the ability to work from home, but those that do have the ability to work from home and are able to work during quarantine periods, obviously, we are allowing them to work and no time is being deducted from their sick or vacation time. This is just a, an opportunity as fair as possible to our employees by extending this coverage that the government, federal government ended on December 31st of 2020. And with that, I'll be glad to take any, any questions.
Thank you, Davy. Does any council member have a question for Davy in regards to this temporary policy? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve new business item number four and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none. We have approved new business item number four. Now we'll move to information and discussion items. Our first and only discussion item tonight is spring sports and tennis lessons, COVID guidelines update, sports tourism COVID guidelines, USSA and Top Gun Weekend 2021. Brown Simpson, thanks for joining us, Brown.
Good morning, excuse me, good afternoon, council. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Can everyone hear Brown?
Yes.
Want to make sure. Well, first of all, we want to thank you guys for being supportive of us being able to bring back U-Sports last year. We brought those back in June of last year after COVID first came out and we have successfully been able to offer U-Sports through COVID guidelines. And I think that we've learned a lot in coming up on just about a year now that we've been dealing with COVID. We did want to get this out to you guys to make sure that you understood. We haven't changed a lot. We changed a couple of things with dealing with COVID. We want to make sure that all of our participants that participate and our parents, especially our volunteer coaches, understand the rules and restrictions that we have put in place to try to be as safe as we can with COVID, but also to offer participants in our sports programs an opportunity to participate and enjoy U-Sports for what it is. And so I did provide you with the different sports that we're gonna offer this spring and also with tennis lessons. And I want to, first of all, just go through and make sure that the public also too understands, especially those that might be watching this meeting or listening in, that we do take our guidelines very serious and we have tried to uphold our guidelines and do it as safe as we can with that. So with that, all of our sports, everyone should conduct daily symptoms evaluations of participants as well as other household members. If any member has any of the symptoms, participants should not attend or should leave, should leave. They have a fever, cough, shortness of breath, fatigue, body aches, you lost taste or smell, sore throat, congestion, a runny nose, nausea, vomiting, and/or diarrhea. Our spectators should social distance while watching games. The masks are always highly encouraged by outdoor sports spectating. We do require when they're indoor in one of our gym facilities that all participants, if they're not participating in the contest, have to have their mask on and do the parents that are there watching the games. Parents should keep hand sanitizer on them and players should periodically sanitize hands during practicing games. Participants' parents should avoid carpooling if possible, except with their immediate family members. Coaches and players should face at least six feet apart on a field during warmups and drill. Some leagues will have limit on participants and team sizes will be reduced. Our players will strictly be required to stay in designated team areas for games. Players should social distance on sidelines and coaches should assign areas on sidelines and dugouts. One of the newest things that we've added since we've learned a lot about COVID that we're gonna require now is players should wear a face covering when not actively participating in a game. And we're doing that by training our coaches on that and getting our game officials and staff to help remind someone if they're not in a game, they need to have their face mask on. No handshakes, high five or fist bumps before, during, or after games or practices. Players should refrain from any unnecessary physical contact with teammates, opposing players, coaches, umpires, and fans. Outdoor sports coaches will be required to wear masks when in team huddles in a close, continued proximity of players. Coaches should limit post-game meetings and use digital means of communication for team info. Teams must leave the field immediately after the game concludes or have no post-game snacks. Players will have their temperature checked upon entering any of our indoor facilities, which includes our gyms. Temperatures must be or below 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit. Games and practices will be spaced within a 15, 10 to 15 minute buffer between them to clear the gym. And teams and spectators should exit gym immediately after games or practices. Staff and hand sanitizing stations will be located at our front doors. We've got those now in our gym facilities. And right now, we're using, over the while, we use the back door entrance of the gym as our main entrance and basketballs and volleyballs will be sanitized after every game or practice. Players wearing mouthpieces will keep them in and on times will be on the court of play and should only taken out once a player reaches a designated spot on the team bench. So that's what we're sending out to all of our, our teams, our parents to make sure they understand what our guidelines are. I'll be glad to, go ahead and I want to just go through. If you have any, does anybody have any questions on our, kind of our guidelines? I'll ask that question first.
I saw that if we have anybody who tests a positive on the team, that we're gonna quarantine the whole team. Do we have, do we have any coaches that we can, like, God forbid, the coach gets it and can't come back to coach his team? Do we have anybody in reserve that we can tap to fill that void?
Yes, sir, we do. We, the majority of the teams, Jamie, excuse me, Mr. Shirey, have assistant coaches beside a head coach too. And I will be honest with you, we've had to deal with that some, we've had some, some cases. Not that many, just a couple, and I think we've tried to brief y'all on those. We have had to quarantine some teams and we were, and we were able to work through all those situations and reschedule their games.
Yeah, I will say, like I said, my child participated in the basketball program this past year and I felt like everything went very smoothly with the transitions between games and the fans, the players, coaches, everybody did a great job of adhering to the guidelines that we'd set forth. People sat in their cars until the game prior finished, then they'd leave. So great job to the staff in the way that went forward. My one question that I have is just making sure that the field sports we have, that we do have hand sanitizing stations out there. I've not been there personally, but just making sure we're covered at those facilities.
Yes, ma'am. We will, we will make sure we've got those and some of the facilities, like for example, we use Calhoun Street Park. We'll have a bathroom facility now. And like Dobie Bridge, we have a bathroom facility that has the soap and all that too. But the ones that we don't, that we have to bring in a porta jibe, we'll make sure that we have those. Would y'all like for me to cover the each individual sport or do you have any questions on that? I'll be glad to go through that. Nothing really changed from the fall on that. We still are not gonna offer T-ball in the spring for the three and four-year-olds, just kind of young for that, especially when we're dealing with the social distancing. We hope to bring that back in the fall. I will mention, just for the public, we'll be offering soccer, which we're registering for now, baseball and softball, flag football, volleyball, and a spring basketball league also too. And we also will be offering tennis lessons also starting this spring. So, does anybody have any questions about any of those individual sports?
Brown, with flag football, who will be cleaning the flags? I noticed in the information it talked about encouraging the players to wear gloves, that I think that's a great idea. But as far as who owns that, I know it's usually the coaches that bring those to and from each practice.
Well, yes, ma'am. One good thing about the flag football, each player has their own set of flags. So they get their own set of flags. They don't have to, we don't have to share any of that equipment or anything. We use the, many of you know that we use, we use the program NFL Flag Football, so each player will get their own flags. So they'll have those individually.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other questions about any of the individual sports?
Anybody have any questions for Brown? Brown, thank you. I know it's been complicated at best and that we continue to work towards opening programs for the kids to get exercises. Great. So thank you very much for your presentation. Are there no further questions for Brown? All right, we have no executive session items this evening.
I'll mention one more thing.
Sure.
The only thing, other thing was our sports tourism COVID guidelines, you should have received a copy of those from USSA, Top Gun, the two groups that we work with. None of their guidelines have changed from last year. The one thing that I know has always been, they started this last year and we've asked them to keep this this year. There will be no gates taking up ticket, gate money on the weekend tournaments. They will, they will do that internally, just for your information, just like they did this past year. Just wanted to mention that.
Good, thank you.
You bringing that up, I'll see it's North Carolina's version of USSA. Is there any different guidelines for South Carolina? I know we see a little bit of difference on the soccer side.
No, ma'am. It's not. That's a great question. We, with our close proximity to Charlotte, the guy that we work with, the organization head of that, he actually works for North Carolina USSA out of the Charlotte office. So they have been given permission by office, so they have been given permission by South Carolina that we can host tournaments here in Fort Mill because of the proximity to Charlotte. So it's no changes in any of the guidelines, it's just, we work with them because we're closer to Charlotte.
All right, thank you, Brown.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
For the questions? All right, Brown, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we do not have an executive session scheduled for this evening. It is very nice to see that we have a full house tonight, thank you all for logging in. We will do a roundtable for what's good for the community. I would like to start with the efforts that are being, that are underway in Rock Hill at the COVID vaccination clinic. This is not a Rock Hill effort, it is an effort for all those in the vicinity. Fort Mill is assisting, as is TGK. They are looking for donations of paper towels, Band-Aids, hand sanitizer, snacks for the volunteers that are working that clinic. The clinic is open from nine AM until four PM, Tuesday through Friday, and this is at the Galleria Mall in the area that used to be Goody's. It's in the backside of the mall behind the Sears building. You must have a VAMS account, that's a CDC account that you have to go online and fill out the information to be able to register to get a vaccine at any location. If you do not have an email address, get someone close to you or call one of the numbers that's posted in our material on our town website, Rock Hill's town website, DGK's town website, to help you figure out how to get registered. I just registered for four, five of us today. Right now, the, it's one A, meaning healthcare workers, et cetera, and anyone in South Carolina sixty-five and up now can register for their vaccine. So you can get information on our website, we will continue to update that information as it is made available to us. Area churches in Rock Hill that are sponsoring days a week that they would help you set up your VAMS account if you need it, that's V A M S, and again, that's a CDC and DHEC account, so they can track who's been vaccinated and check for any of the effects of the vaccine. Just registering a VAMS account does not guarantee you'll get a shot. You have to go back in once you have secured an account and make an appointment at one of the locations. I will tell you that, as of late this evening, there were a number of openings Wednesday at the clinic in Rock Hill. There are also openings at Mackey Family Practice in Lancaster, so once you're into that system, you'll be able to tell where you might be able to get that shot. I do know that some of the publics here is teeters, and I did see information that the Walmart in Fort Mill would be giving the vaccine. You still have to schedule and make an appointment, you cannot just show up and get a vaccine. You must be registered with an appointment to be able to receive a vaccine. Most of the shots currently are two shots, so you'll get your first vaccine, and then they'll set you up with an appointment to receive the second one. So, all in all, I'd like to give a shout out to the people in Fort Mill that have been assisting with that clinic and volunteering, there are many from Fort Mill that have helped with that. I know my church has offered an assistance with an extra wheelchair they needed, and I know many members of our community are gathering Band-Aids and paper towels and the things, latex, non-latex gloves that they need. We do have a list on our website that details the types of things that they're looking for, so if you so feel compelled, just let us know, and, you know, we want to try to help get as many people vaccinated as possible. I did talk with someone today that said that they were vaccinating up to seven hundred a day at the clinic in Rock Hill, and currently, with only a couple of weeks, they've vaccinated, they've given out upwards of nine thousand shots. So thanks to Medical Center for coordinating and all the people in our community that are helping with that effort. So, Larry, do you have something for the good of the whole?
I've known several people that have gotten vaccinations, one of them at the Charlotte Motor Speedway, and one of them at the Rock Hill Galleria Mall, and they said that's an example of efficiency like you've never seen before. It really goes off oil, so you don't have to worry about going over and have to stand for two or three hours.
It is, it is very efficient at each location, I've been told. All righty, Ronnie, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Just tagging the information you just said, Walmart will actually have a vaccine and don't know whether they'll get it anymore.
Yeah, there's a limited supply that's given out weekly, so that's why you have to have a scheduled appointment, so you'll know whether to go or not. So, again, repeating myself a lot, but you got to have an appointment, don't just... Jamie?
Yeah, and I just, I think I just saw Governor McMaster's released another one hundred and twenty-five vaccines out of the state reserve, so they'll probably be making their way into the, into the system with that. That's one thing, Carolinas, when, when there's something that has to be taken care of, be it be this, or hurricane, or tornado, we step up. That's one of the things that makes me most proud about being a member of the, where we are. I just had a quick thing for Davey, I was going to ask if we could start looking online with everything that the president has been pushing through with alternative vehicles, maybe we could find if there's a grant or anything out there that could allow us maybe to install some charging stations. I see more and more of our constituents are driving alternate powered vehicles. I know that we looked at it a couple years ago, it was really expensive back then, I was just wondering maybe it'd come down in time a little bit. And then, just on a personal note, I just wanted to thank everybody who called and sent me cards for my birthday, I greatly appreciate that. You don't realize how many people are thinking about you until you come to a day like that, and then it really touched my heart, like, with everybody who sent that to me, so thank you very much.
Awesome, happy birthday again. All right, Ms. Lisa?
Don't really have anything, I am wearing red, though, to help represent and help everybody remember Heart Health Month, it's something we all should take seriously, especially during this COVID time, but even more so, I think each one of us on council, in one way or another, has been touched with us, so I encourage you all to be active. We've got some great fitness facilities around here, both indoor and outdoor, so hopefully promote a healthy lifestyle within your family, eat right, and take care of yourself, so, other than that, I'm good, thank you.
Perfect. Trudy Bean, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, when you were mentioning, mentioning the facility in Rock Hill with the shots, my women's club is actually participating in that. We're just getting started, we're going to be collecting some of the items that they need, as well as some volunteers there and the facility itself.
That's wonderful, Trudy, thank you for, for doing that and being a member of that organization.
And to Jamie, I'm sorry I missed your birthday, but I hope that it was very, very enjoyable, and that may have been during the time that Chip and I both were sick, so, anyway, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Moody?
Hey, everybody, good to see everybody, I don't really have anything else to add, but, you know, glad we had a good meeting, and I think we covered a lot of different topics, like what Jamie had to bring up about the charging stations, you're seeing a lot of those cars driving around lately, it'd be kind of neat to, you know, see where things go from there, and good to see all you guys, I'm glad everybody's healthy for now, let's try to keep it that way.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I would like to comment on, I enjoy and really like this new format for the presentation, for everyone being on board, and thank you, staff, for making this look so much more professional and keeping us on task for the agenda, it looks great, so loving the update.
Yay, I did of that, those comments, I think it has been so much easier to follow where we are, now if I could just get the words right when we vote, that'd be just a bonus, wouldn't it? And cover all the numbers. I laugh, but I swear I try hard. All righty then, well, I am just very, very grateful, Lisa said it great about the heart issue this month, if you see red ribbons out on homes and mailboxes, it is to recognize Heart Health Month, and I know it's near and dear to a lot of us here on council and are grateful for everyone pitching in with that. Thank you all for everything that you do to help our community be a great place to live, and with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Trudy, and I got a second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much, look forward to having a good week.